Last year, it's the freight impact grant. Those are fairly large grants to help with commerce in areas where you do have an industrial zone. And we applied for that for approvals to Broad Street from Third Street to J.T. Bankway. The funds are asking for over $1.6 million to buy roadway through trains, all pedestrian facilities, as Wade Off said, impact traffic from the, well, impact traffic from trucks. That was Phase One. We're anticipating a much larger project if we're successful with that. We've had some neighboring communities have been successful with the freight grants. We're in line now with the application. He just authorized me tonight to submit a NJD of T discretionary aid application for Hudson Street as one of the roads that we had some D and so utilities work on. It's also distressed in several areas. It's, when we do a road, we have to bring up the standards. It's going to involve some guide rail replacement as we start going down the hill. So we're applying under discretionary aid. Discretionary aid offers funding to municipalities that just can't continue with what they have down with their current funds. We've been successful twice with DMT grants in the last tenure. Most recently was Washington Street, as you recall. We received nearly $600,000 for that grant 86 years ago. Utilities, as you know, have been very busy the last two years in town. Elizabeth Town Gas completed main replacements at Hill, Crest Valley View, personal hill. It's still built. In 2020, they're looking to continue to scale hill in the personal neighborhood as well as some areas of Rose Street Third. With that, we'll be receiving significant funds as the utility is responsible per or ordinance to pave half the road on the side that the trench is established. They put the trench in, they pay up to the trench and they're not handling it. They're responsible for that. If they stitch the road more, as we say, if we're crossing with more utilities, we evaluate the road and try to get them to do more. So they're obligated now for certain funds. The same happened to Aqua, so a strong effort in the last couple of years. So with all those roads open, subject to resurfacing, as well as targeted roads that we have through that, the roadway assessment program that I had, we're looking at 60 roads in the next year, year and a half that we'd like to address. Now, obviously, we have to wait until we get through the cleaning and inspection program on stores. Hopefully, much of the store repair work we can do in six years, which means lining or some grounding and pipe repairs. But with that, we have investment coming. Now, I'll be giving, bottom of the low, my projections as to what these costs are and we'll have to work out a plan. We do have a significant amount of funds in-house now because the utilities have made earlier contributions, but they have not yet made the contributions for 2020. So when that comes in, we'll see. But as a result of the meeting on Friday, we've targeted Bates Street, first section of Mercer, then Lock Street for improvements in the first part. Again, we do have funding for that. So we'll play out this first TV and cleaning and inspection program to accompany those roads shortly. I also added a little discussion as to the current development projects that are moving forward right now. You all know that Peter Sol Land is moving Phase One, was approved. Buildings Three, Five, and Six are moving forward. Six being up close to Valley View, Five is the old Cameron Deck, as we called it, and Building Three is the closest to, as opposed to the highway connected to pension base on Roseberry Street. Phase Two was approved by the planning board at the end of last, just at the end of the year, and that's for, that would be for the largest building in the site. Larger than the one that's, which one is in-house, going toward Phillipsburg. It leaves open a second block for them to have a smaller building and eliminates one building where the, due to the fact that we took out the Department of Defense building, remember Department of Defense building? That's no longer necessary for with that, so they can get a larger building that I just discussed. That was approved. We're still looking at compliance documents. Those will be signed, we'll be ready to go. CVS Pharmacy, you all had questions on that. It was approved over a year and a half ago. They indicate they're waiting to get through the squinter before they start. And they came up with a new prototype building. Most of the CVSs, as you see, they look the same. The one they're doing for Phillipsburg is a bit different, so they had to get new prices, new vendors. They're evaluating that at the late summer launch. It was also more environmentally on that site than was predicted, but they're looking, they tell us, they're looking to begin in the springtime. And Shammy Shine Car Wash already started preliminary work. They like to build a little car wash at a time, so they're finished someplace else and continue with that project. So they did very good work. I also made some comments on planning projects that we have active. Just heard a nice discussion on the NPP program. We don't have to continue on that. NJEDA was in last year, and they offered to help us re-establish our main street designation. Tioga's had lapsed over the years. That designation opens up some funding and technical assistance for improvements in the downtown area. We have Highlands planning grants that we're working with. We have the land use and open space. The plan is underway right now. We're working with the planning board to finish that. Should talk about that on Thursday night. Possibly look at a subcommittee to work on that. It seems to go quicker with subcommittee work. Sustainable Economic Development Plan, that was a grant that was obtained about a year and a half ago, initial grant of $25,000. It matches and runs parallel to the NPP grant, but can extend the scope of where the NPP grant goes. It was instead being just south of the Black Bridge, we go to the north side of the Black Bridge. We'll do these discussions there. We have a store water management grant, $15,000. That'll help us update the town's store water management program, which matches to what we call our MSWOR program, and that's the town's permit to discharge store water. This was a program that began in 2004, but we've been compliant every year. The DEP resisted considerably last year. There's more work with DPW to do, including very tight mapping of our outfalls, testing of our outfalls, locating where all our bases are, upgrade the bases. So I have on my last, I have a comprehensive being with DPW to get them on track with what these improvements have to be. But this grant from Highlands will help us with that mapping. And we can match some of the work that's being done by Civil Solutions on the tax map update and tie it to the GIS work that's being done. There's interesting technology that developed too. The mapping can now be done with a cell phone, the Highlands and DEP provided app, so somebody can walk out, stand at the base, and put that whole information that's required, and it's really quite good. We've been using that in most of our other towns. And we're also introducing a carbon and rock ordinance due to the cars. It's a limestone throughout the town. We haven't had any issues. When we do a planning board review, we stress areas where we know there's cars, the possibility of cars, and we got controls over it. We're finding cars up the hill. And if there were, I think, little tighter controls in the beginning for the mandatory study, we could have saved a little bit of time up there. The developers could save some time also. So we'll be introducing a carbon and rock ordinance modeled on ordinance in several of the other towns in the area. And the last one item I just mentioned is a store water center, a store project update. So I'd like to have another meeting with the mayor and whatever it was we might have a short discussion. So we have a lot on the plate right now, all positive. Any questions?
You mentioned the first block of Mercer Street, but it's actually the last block of Mercer Street from Keene to South Main.
Yes. Yes, okay, yes. I have it on.
Right, okay, but I wanted to make it to the public that it wasn't the first block. Secondly, the Phase One on Warren Street, there's a section on the westernbound side in that particular area where there is no sidewalks whatsoever. Will there be sidewalks?
That's, that's why there's the numbers a bit higher over there, because we have to place the sidewalks. So we're anticipating that. It also ties in for safety for schoolchildren.
Right, from Anderson down to Colber and beyond?
We'll go riding like we always have.
Thank you.
One word from Ed, if you could, they do have a little word to add here. Based on 60 roads that we're looking to do, that's 10.5 miles of roadway. It's a total estimated value of $3.8 million. Funds from DMT currently are $790,000. Funds from utilities currently are 1.2, close to 1.2. Funds from older town ordinances are $700,000, and the difference that's required is about $1.2 million to make that up when we continue to grow the program. Not including any sanitary work that we may have to do, but hopefully it'll be okay. I'm using this report as a basis. I like how they've said we've looked, so we can keep carrying on what we have.
Be glad to have you. Councilman, do you have any questions?
No. Thank you, Stan.
Councilwoman Polver?
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, I'd like to open the floor to public petitions. Just a reminder, three-minute time limit?
Yep.
And please maintain proper decorum. Thank you.
We built him in 230 South Main. First thing, I'd like to thank the mayor for jumping on the project. Phillipsburg Railroad Restorians were trying to get extended rail line. He sent out a packet down to New Jersey Transit last week. Secondly, we looked into the lease as far as the transit lot, being able to collect funds on that during events that are being run in the eastern or with the various trains. And that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate it.
I'm Joe Minor again, 392 South Main Street. I'd like to point out that during the previous talk I had tonight, I pointed out that there was no authorization to pay in 2020-40. This is what you passed. Now therefore, quote, "Now therefore be resolved that the council of the town of Phillipsburg, county forwarding, that the foregoing refund in the amount of $12,996.34." You needed to have amended that.
You asked for a motion.
Yes, you needed to amend that. You didn't do it.
Can I get a motion to amend, authorize the payment on 2020-40, please? Second. Roll call?
Councilman White?
Hope State.
Councilwoman Dronel?
Yes.
Councilman Polver?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Giallo?
Yes. Thanks again, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I very appreciate it.
No problem.
I promise I will.
Joe, how are you?
I talked to the parks office about the Stockton Street lot, that we had a 30-day grace period for the permit before we had to get the permit parking permit. And she said there was a 30-day grace period. Well, I got a ticket for that. And when I called, they told me it was a $33 ticket. She also asked me what the badge number was. Well, I couldn't tell her because there's no badge number on it. And the top part wasn't filled out with who it belonged to, but it was on our vehicle. So I was very upset because on Saturdays and Sundays, everybody parks there, and it's not enforced. I live there, and there's a bunch of other people that live there too. And on Saturdays and Sundays, the lots are filled with people that are going to church. Now, I paid dearly to park there, and then people park there, and it's never enforced. So why am I paying to park there when they get to park there for nothing?
If you could, the mayor would like to address this. It's covered under the Department of the Mayor and Municipal Courts.
Okay.
I don't know who gave you the ticket, but if you have a 30-day grace period, you give me the ticket.
Okay.
Sure. That's right. I take the sweep.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you're making a representation that ticket's going away. I think you're going to look into what's in.
An investigation of the ticket, not a taking care of it.
If you have a 30-day grace period.
Well, I think, I think what you're offering to do, Mayor, is look into the issuance of that ticket on her behalf. You're not making any representations as to what's going to happen with the ticket.
But the thing of it is, is I have a 30-day grace period.
So the way this works is you have a municipal court and then a prosecutor.
Right, so I have to go to court, and I'm going to pay more than $33 to fight the ticket. So let's get that straight.
There's a process?
I understand that.
Well, that's the process.
But I'm talking to council, Rich, no disrespect.
No, no, but I'm just trying to make it clear that the council, Ms. Pierce, the council can't do anything.
But the mayor can, because he oversees the police department. Thank you.
The mayor can look into it for you guys.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Yeah.
Hello, Mr. Pierce.
I'm Mr. Pierce, I'm going to be careful, Ms. Pierce. I have a question. I didn't, when the councilwoman Polver was talking about painting buildings, gardening gray, I missed which buildings?
All town-owned recreation buildings, so only if the town owns it. If the town doesn't own the recreation building, I would say, well, obviously, we can't just go around painting buildings that don't belong to us.
And what's the purpose of painting all the town-owned recreation?
Continuity.
Okay. I would just ask you to consider when, whoever's going to make the decision about doing that, that I've spoken with people who say, I'm not a gardening gray person. I went to Phillipsburg Catholic. I'm green and white. People who go to St. Philip and St. James School may not think of themselves as being gardening gray. And gardening gray is basically the high school colors, I think, sort of gets put out to the rest of the town, but just to be aware that there are people who don't connect to gardening gray. That's one thing. Second thing, I want to just applaud Councilman Wyatt for bringing up the issue of the veteran's exemption and the money being refunded to this veteran, that the town is giving back more than the benefit of what the town received, because some of that money went to school, some went to the school district, some went to the town. And I think that, Councilman Wyatt brought that up, I didn't hear anybody make an argument the other way to explain why they thought it was a good idea to, to give more money back to this person than, as Councilman said, we got the benefit from.
I can explain to you why. I feel he's owed it. The man was unaware of the law. We made a decision to give it back, and that's it. I can only speak for myself.
Well, I spoke about this at a meeting in December, and I think that there is a good reason to look at this, and I think that it was a bad precedent to set, that other, other folks who are in the same situation may request the same thing, and you've made this commitment, so you're going to have to make the commitment in the future. And it's our tax money, and I don't like the fact that we're giving back more than we got the benefit from.
Your opinion is appreciated. Thank you. I'd like to move to council open time. Oh, sorry, Mr. Morissette.
David Morissette, five Fairview Heights, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. In reference to, I'd also like to thank Mayor Wyatt for recognizing the fact that we're giving more back in terms of what we collected in terms of town tax. We're also giving property tax for the county and open space tax, et cetera. Did anybody on the council or mayor, oh, I guess, request the money from the county or the school board for the compensation for the gentleman who's getting the refund?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I read the law, and I have a comment. I read the law regarding the refund given to disabled veterans, and I do have a little bit of an issue with it. And the issue is, you have to be 100% disabled to get this refund. Actually, I have two issues. One of the issues I have with it is I think the threshold should be lower if it at all affects your employment status, ability to have employment. That's not something you guys can handle, but I'm just expressing my opinion. The other difficulty I have with current law is that it only gives a benefit to veterans who are 100% disabled and own a home. Now, most veterans who have significant disabilities, I would conjecture, don't own homes, they rent, because they're not in a position to afford it. As I said, these are not things that the county council will, but if you ever have a chance to express your opinion to your state senators, that would be appreciated.
Reggie Ragwood?
Sorry about that.
I guess this is one's not working.
Yeah, not this week.
Reggie Ragwood, 390 Hecklen Street, Phillipsburg. I have only one document here, and I hope you'll be able to make copies.
Can you do a quick click, please?
And, well, I'd like you to look at it.
I'll take a look after the meeting. Thank you.
I'd like you, if you're possible, to pass it around. I mean, make copies for everyone. I will only be mentioning my name. I will not be mentioning anyone else's name, although I believe referring to two other individuals. But I'll only be mentioning my name. I believe we all try to be honorable, all of us elected officials, including myself. We have an obligation to the children to be role models. So I hope we all try to, if we're not capable sometimes, but we try to act honorably. My birth certificate, I was not born in Africa. Phillipsburg, New Jersey. My baptism certificate, St. Philip and James, I was not, I'm not a Muslim. One of my three varsity letters from Rutgers University, lightweight football. My honorable discharge from the United States Army Reserve. And finally, my income tax. I'm proud of my income tax. I spent almost $3,000 last year as a retiree to support our troops. I got nothing to hide. These are examples of verifiable documentation. I've been charged with a crime, and maybe the mayor can help this and that charge. I've been charged with harassment in this town by a town president, someone all of you know, a Facebook friend of mine and a Facebook friend of at least three of you, and I've been charged with harassment. I won't mention this person's name, but I will be appearing before a prosecutor. I've been charged with harassment, which is a criminal offense. A criminal conviction can result in substantial fines, financial hardship, probation, possible incarceration for up to six months, possible forfeiture of job, other penalties which can be permitted. I've been charged with harassment. I know somebody on this council's, has a relative, but was also charged with harassment. Mine hasn't made the newspapers yet, but I'm hoping this council and mayor can help me, because I need, just like I have documentation, this is evidence, there is no evidence that I've harassed anyone. And there is also on that piece of paper, two other accusations that have been made about me publicly. I have a reputation like we all do, and I'm going to, this is part of my reputation, but I also have a reputation that is beyond this. And I'm asking council and the mayor to help me to clear my name, and please circulate that document to all the elected officials.
Reggie, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to council open time. Councilman Wyatt?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dronel?
Well, just a couple of things may all came up in the course of the meeting. I think painting all the buildings is a wonderful idea. I liked it when the pool building was done, gardening gray. I'm all about gardening gray. You could paint every building in this town gardening gray, and I'd be happy about it. I think it's a great spring/summer project. Wonderful idea if we can make it happen. Quick comment on the recreation. No secret, for over almost 30 years, I've been involved in recreation. I think it's time the town took a nice active role in it, but in the future, I would just prefer, before decisions happen, to not read about them on Facebook, as happened this time. We adopted it tonight. Fine to hear about it tomorrow. I didn't like finding out about it while I was out of town, from others who had a lot of questions. But I do want to thank the clerk, the fire chief, the engineer, and the mayor. They all came, they provided good reports. That's good information for everybody and it's keeping us informed. And also, I want to thank Warren Animal Hospital. I was out of town and couldn't attend with my own pets, but I hear the vaccination event was very well received and very well run, and I just want to extend that thank you to Warren Animal and Dr. Sackio's office. That's it. Thank you very much.
Councilman Polver?
Yes, I'm going to take a moment to apologize to the councilwoman. She was out of town, I believe. Councilwoman, I don't know if you're referring to me, but it may have been my post regarding signups. If it was, I apologize, just so you understand the reason.
It came under the first town organization, so I don't know who it was, but I assumed an announcement would have come from the town.
So I don't, I don't post from that much. Could have been a share from mine, but just so you understand, I apologize. The reason I put it out so quickly was because we were under the impression that signups from both the softball coordinator and the baseball coordinator needed to be handed in by the end of February, so that's why we had opened them up. In the future, since I am the rep to the recreation committee, I will make sure that I contact you and the rest of council prior to making any such announcements. Mayor, 65 Sitgrave Street was presented to us from Fire Chief Hay, and there's a Firth Street building, I believe it's 300 Firth, right next to the senior center. Both are in horrible condition. I was wondering perhaps if you could add those to your list as well, or maybe even have some of the inspectors go out. 300 Firth in particular, it's, the porch is in a dangerous situation. He has these posts underneath the roof, they're not shored up. They can easily be knocked away. It's right at a bus stop.
That's an easy one, Councilman Polver. If you would refer that to Kevin Duddy, if you would.
Sure.
And council, Council Rich Turner?
Yes, sir.
Could you add those?
I just did.
That's an easy one.
That was fast. Government work, right in front of your eyes. Look at that. Look at that. The, earlier this week, actually for the past six months, I've been receiving complaints about trees all throughout the town of Phillipsburg. I'd like to be able to get someone from the shade tree commissioner, perhaps we can talk to them about what it is that they do. They kind of judging from that. I mean, I haven't heard anything from them, but there are.
We have one shade tree member.
We have one shade tree, remember?
Mike.
Mike, okay. So I'll reach out to Mike and try and get, you know, the mayor's right, I know we're not in the tree business. There are some, there are some issues with some of the trees that we, the town planted a long time ago. What's that? That would help. If anybody's interested in the shade tree commissioner, please reach out to Vicki Connor. The next is, I want to commend you, Mayor, on the projected ordinance amendment for Chapter 464 regarding the property managers living within a 10-mile radius for all absentee landlords. I do believe that's a necessity. I believe we have a lot of absentee landlords here in the town of Phillipsburg, none of which have property managers that respond in a timely manner. As you know, we've had residents go without heat for a weekend because a property manager from Jersey City or Keansburg decides they're not going to drive up here to take care of such a lot.
They live in Clinton?
Correct. So I, I wholeheartedly, and I wholeheartedly support this and hope that council president will have it on for the very next agenda. The last I will just like to address, as Councilman Piazza had done earlier, anytime in the town of Phillipsburg that a disabled veteran, or any veteran for that matter, comes before us with a request, and if that request is reasonable, my vote is going to be yes. I don't, I understand how some of you feel, but many, especially this veteran in general who I do not know personally, enlisted in fault for us in the Vietnam War, he came back disabled. I will, I will gladly disperse these $12,000 from the town coffers. I understand, and you seen today that we, a lot of us did disagree up here, but we did so cordially, without argument. But I will continue to support our veteran community, and I guess I'll continue to yell that for it. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Council President?
Shout outs and thank yous. First, go to our DPW because they are busy through our new mayor, and they are doing the job without question and in complete direction. The town looks a whole lot better. We have a lot to go, but it is, it is working. Yes, it does, exactly. Thank you to Mayor Trisigny for those notes, and a thank you also to Kelly Lefler. I actually called the mayor twice, and I called Kelly once, and I was three for three with them answering the phone, an unbelievable percentage that I'm clearly not used to the past two years. Thank you very much for being attentive, Kelly, the mayor. I want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Harris and the entire MPT team, who is doing an amazing job. I said before, I'm a huge fan of strategic plans, and there's one laid out before us with its strategies and goals, and it's, the lighting project was fantastic, huge fan of uplighting, and that's, I saw some of the old water tanks actually being painted, some examples, and I was in the car with someone recently, and they mentioned about the old water tank, although it's not our property, but maybe we can look into seeing the tanks that are around town or things that are erected and that type of painting with a client gray scheme would be fantastic, albeit it's not full represented, but, but yeah, we'll get into that later on. I want to thank our, our news media and our, especially WFMZ, who has done an unbelievable job in its written report and its objective news reporting. We first took over, we had zero coming out of this town. We made a few phone calls to see if we can bring some positive light back to the town of Phillipsburg, albeit we might have some ups and downs. It's always been a very fair and objective reporting, and we do appreciate that. And please, for those in the audience today, a big thank you and continued success in your work in coverage of our town. For the residents of 34 Heckman Street and the rest of our residents that had to live in the tyranny of filth and vermin and everything else, and most importantly, non-enforcement of anything, to reduce their quality of life, I'd give you the biggest shout out I possibly can give. I think it was terrible what you had to go through these last number of years without the enforcement or having the support of an administration that understands your pain and what you live with. I know Mr. and Mrs. Moore are witnesses in the background today, and I've been down a few times to your house to smell the urine, to smell the mold, and to smell everything else and see what I've seen. And again, I've grown up in your house across the street, that entire street as a youth, so I'm so happy to hear that addresses are coming out of our mayor's, our mayor's office, legitimate addresses that are going to be addressed fairly and objectively, just hopefully it's a turnaround. But if it's not, then that's something that he'll address and our council will address. Big shout out to those residents that had to live through that. And lastly, I just want to mention, I heard the words tonight, bad precedent. And, you know, as far as having some money requested back from the county, bad precedents. What was a bad precedent was, former council president Fulmer and I went to city hall to try to understand what happened with an emergency repair that had to do with our sewer system and some leens and stuff like that. And there was a lot of, things weren't done properly. And when that happens, that's on us. So the information that was not coming out of our town hall the last number of years, and for that veteran not to have that information, that's on us. Going forward, it's going to improve. And I'm sure there's going to be a few other situations, albeit it may not be this one. It may be something else that fell through the cracks. I don't know. It's not going to go away overnight. It's still going to pop its head up every once in a while, where the bad precedent that we're setting here as a council, it's called corrective measures, has taken responsibility for our town. And I'll take a few shots in the face, you know, but in the end, when I'm out of here and this town's a better place because of it, I'll smile, not a few bruises here and there, but that's okay because it's about the long run. And I'm really happy to see what I've seen so far. Please continue the good work everybody involved. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much, Council Vice President. I would just like to thank everybody who came together to bring the first town into the fold of the recreation department. I saw a lot of people put their egos aside and made quite a few concessions. Ultimately, I think this organization coming under the town's umbrella will benefit the kids and the residents of the town. And just good luck to all involved, and I look forward to see what comes from that. All I have that everybody didn't cover already. We have two more quick items on the agenda. A raffle application, number 1297 for St. Phillips, St. Phillips and St. James for a raffle license from January 27, 2020 to May 9, 2020, to be raffled off on May 9, 2020. Motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrona?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McKay?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
The second is a motion to form a subcommittee, a complete council committee to serve as a local census ambassador, ensuring a complete accurate count for our community in the 2020 census. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A discussion. Should this have been a resolution to form a subcommittee, or is this something? Counsel?
Well, the census, you're going to form, just the council is authorizing the formation of a subcommittee, so.
So we don't need a resolution, this could just be a motion?
Right. If you want, once you form the subcommittee, if you want to formalize that by way of a motion, identifying the subcommittee as a member of that, then you can do that, but if you just give the initial go-ahead.
Okay. And this was all of Ms. Harris's?
Correct.
Okay. I'm good.
Roll call?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGrona?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McKay?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
The council for executive session, I'd like to move to adjourn. So moved. Second.